Our second group of candidates tonight are for the Commissioner's position in Precinct One. These candidates are Barbara Meeks, Tim Paulson, and Darrell Atfield. Will these candidates please take the stage?
The same rules apply as before, no personal attacks, et cetera. And we will start with Ms. Meeks. Please take three minutes to introduce yourself. Tell us about your experience and your voting history.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I don't know how many of you live in Precinct One, so, yes Ginger, of course we know you do, I'm glad you're here. I'm very proud to say that my family moved here in 1966. My dad was one of those military companies that we moved around every, you know, two and a half to three years. So I have been in Precinct One nearly 50 years. It's where I've gone to school, it's where I have worked, started several successful businesses, it's where I have played, I have combed the shores of Clear Lake and Galveston Bay, it's where I've learned to fish, where I learned to waterski, where I went to school, where I've developed wonderful friends, many of you are here this evening and it's good to see you. It's also been in Precinct One, as I mentioned, a successful business career. 1979, my new husband and I started, or newlywed husband and I started a snap-on-tool business, built it up to be very successful. Four years later, we sold it to acquire the capital to start our lifelong dream of Boston Whaler Boat Dealership, Meeks Marine. And we did business not just locally, not just in Texas, but across the country and around the world. And it was wonderful to do business with the public in a recreational setting. And this is also right here in Precinct One, where I have had, as an adult, all of my Republican activities. I first voted Republican in 1976 for Gerald Ford, and I remember just feeling so disappointed when that peanut farmer won. But it didn't deter me, it just made me even stronger, and I have been a diehard Republican ever since, from block walking, the way we used to have to do it, the old-fashioned way, stuffing envelopes, we didn't have these mail houses that had it all automated, block walking for candidates, not just in League City, not just in Galveston County, but even in Harris County, helping Orlando Sanchez the first time he ran for county treasurer in Harris County. It has been wonderful to go with the TFRW to Austin and San Antonio and beyond, and the most gratifying was seeing my daughter, I was a mom, my daughter's now 31, and she is married and lives in the Heights, but seeing her following my footsteps. She was a page at several Republican Women State Conventions, and she lives in the Heights, and unfortunately, we know who her Congresswoman is. So you never know, maybe one day, if the demographics change, she might even run for Congress in the United States, and certainly in Texas, anything is possible. So I'm very glad to be here. If you have any other questions, I'm more than glad to visit with you afterwards. Thank you very much.
First, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to come speak today. My name is Tim Paulson, and I was elected to the city council up in League City in 2007. I'm the current city mayor since 2011. Now, I've lived in League City for 21 years, and I'm married to my wife Ann, and in just a couple more weeks, we're going to be celebrating our 37th wedding anniversary. And we have two sons that are both products of the CCISD school system. And you know, I have deep roots here in Galveston County. I grew up in Morgan's Point, which is basically the north end of Galveston Bay, and I grew, you know, I was three years old when my parents moved to Morgan's Point. We had a big hill, and right on the footsteps of Galveston Bay, every summer I'd have my shoes off and I'd be wading in the water and enjoying the cool breezes. You know, I'm a lifelong conservative Republican, and I voted for every presidential candidate on the Republican side since Gerald Ford. And I'm asking you for your support to elect me as your county commissioner of Precinct One. You know, as mayor, I've pushed for lower taxes, and today I can say that the tax rate in League City is the lowest it's been since Ronald Reagan was in office. And let's think about that a little bit. Everybody has gotten their appraisal reports every year, and every year they go up. But in League City, you know, we've done what we can to lower those tax rates, so we've gone from 63 cents per thousand down to 57.7. Some of the things that I'm most proud of up in League City is, you know, we couldn't be a city of 100,000 people if we didn't put a lot of infrastructure in the ground. And in the last four and a half years, we have completed more projects, infrastructure-wise, in League City than in its whole 50 years' history. Also, League City is recognized as one of the safest places in the state and nation to live, and it's one of the best places in the country to raise your family. You know, and the last thing I'm very proud of is the leaders make readers. We talked about community service, but when I first became mayor, I started this at League City Elementary, and every Thursday morning at 7:30, I spend 30 minutes a week reading to a young child. Last year, I was unopposed as the mayor up in League City, and that's the first time that a mayor had been re-elected in League City since 1999. But that, to me, is an indication that I really was doing the conservative things that the voters of League City wanted, and over 14,000 of residents in League City voted for me. I'm the only candidate with executive and administrative oversight of a budget of 150 million, which is close to the county's $170 million budget. So I won't have any learning curve, I'll be able to get the ground running. So if you elect me as your next county commissioner, I will bring those same conservative values to the Commissioner's Court. And remember, on March 1st, please elect Tim Paulson your next county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you to the Galveston Republican Women and all of you members for inviting us to speak here tonight. I'm Darrell Atfield, and I want to be your county commissioner. A little about me, I'm married to my high school sweetheart, we've been married for 30 years. I was born and raised in Galveston, Texas. I'm a lifelong resident of Galveston County, 52 years. I'm a 29-year resident of Precinct One. We have three grown children, one practices law with me, one is in the lumber business here in Galveston, and the other is a freshman at LSU. I'm running because I believe our government is broken. I'm running because I want to stop the infighting, I want to stop the lawsuits, I want to stop the power grabs. I'm running to restore transparency, to rebuild trust, and to re-establish teamwork. I have no political agendas, I have no self-promotion. Yes, I voted as a Democrat, but I've never hid behind a label. I voted in the Republican primary for the first Republican judge, I believe, Miles Whittington, when he ran against Susan Chris, and I don't know the year. I voted in that primary for Miles Whittington. In 2012, I downloaded the Republican platform, and I virtually read that, and I agree with virtually all of that platform. I am a conservative, and that has never changed. What changed was the Democratic Party. And so I decided then that I wanted to do like all of these US, notable US politicians who were Democrats, who are great Republicans now, and all of these notable Texas political politicians, and locally, like Judge Cox, and Judge Malley, and Sheriff Trosssett, and Clint Brown. I moved to the Republican Party, and I did that to serve the people that I represent. I want to represent the people, I want to do it in a way that I have always conducted my business. I've been in private practice for 27 years, and I will work to serve these great citizens of the county.
If elected to the Commissioner's Court, you will be a member of the fiscal management team for our county. What is your number-one priority for spending in the county?
Well, first off, you know, I'm going to continue to bring my conservative values about lowering taxes and providing high levels of service. In Precinct One, we have a couple of issues that specifically need to be addressed. You know, the crime rate in Bay Cliff and San Leon is probably the highest place in the county. We have a lot of derelict buildings, boats and such, and I know the current administration, we've done a lot to clean that up. We have issues over in the Bolivar Peninsula, as far as the main ingress egress besides the ferry, which is Highway 87. So that's one of my highest priorities, is towards the residents of Precinct One. And in Bolivar, that would be Highway 87.
Being a conservative in the job of a county commissioner means being a frugal spender of the tax dollars. It means spending appropriately, transparently, in each city or unincorporated area of the county. It means assuring that the tax dollars are not spent frivolously, that the budget cuts are true cuts, and not cuts that are just made to make a budget look good, and then later in the year change that, is so that county business can be run effectively. I will stop the frivolous spending. Currently, there is a lawsuit going on between the judiciary and the County Commissioner's Court. That is absurd. That lawsuit does not need to be. When elected, if the Supreme Court has not ended that lawsuit, I will stop it. 58 cents of every $100 of valuation goes to fund the county budget. Where are your tax dollars being spent? I question it as well. I can assure you I will be a good steward of those dollars, I will spend them cautiously, I will spend them effectively, and I will spend them efficiently to help all elected officials that you put in office, to assist them to effectively and efficiently run their departments. Such as not fight them over paper, or, there was a current fight in this past year over paper for all of the elected officials in their departments. Paper is a necessity for each of those elected officials. So I think I've answered the question. I will spend very frugally.
As a member of Commissioner's Court, I look forward to bringing my conservative values. And what does that mean? We know that smaller government, reduced spending, it's making sure that we provide the necessary services, but make sure that we are watching where every one of those, every single one of the taxpayer dollars go, that's who we are accountable to. My first priority would be to the citizens who live in Precinct One in the unincorporated area, and the county's largest unincorporated area is right there in Precinct One. And we see that surfacing in many areas, they don't have the mayor and city council and the police departments from the individual cities to take care of their crime issues, the drug issues that are rampant. The Sheriff's Department and the DA's Department did a wonderful job in acquiring a building and converting it to be the local law enforcement center. And we're seeing much faster response, I think Ginger, you would agree with that, much quicker response time because they have a presence there. But wouldn't you know, right across the street, it's a game room. So I know they have that on their radar. The other important area is going to be, and the largest single amount of unincorporated area on Bolivar Peninsula. They have had to endure Highway 87, over New Roll Over Pass, the flooding that takes place when we had the heavy rains at Christmas, and we take for granted driving down the street. Those people, if they were driving slowly enough along 87 to prevent all of the wash from going up and onto other cars, if they drove too slowly, their car would be washed away. That's serious, and I look forward to using my communication skills, my mediation training, to sitting down and working with Tech Dot, working with the US Army Corps of Engineers. And that's also going to come in handy as Tech Dot moves forward on the expansion of Highway 146. We're going to have to live with that for a while, that's going to be a big project, and I look forward to helping see that that comes in in a timely manner, and again, representing all of the citizens in Precinct One, but being accountable to all of you as well. Thank you very much.
If elected, how would you obtain information about the needs of the cities and citizens within your jurisdiction?
Judge, I've been speaking all around the precinct, and specifically as it relates to Bolivar, an unincorporated area that's on an island, if you will, it's a peninsula, but it's over there, away from the rest of the precinct, and the Bay Shore, San Leon, Bay Cliff, Bayview, and Kima. Because those unincorporated areas always feel slighted as it relates to the cities like League City and Kima and Clear Lake Shores, I have promised those individuals that I will create a community advisory council, made up of six to 12, I don't know that number, we will meet in my first, long before I take office after I win in March, we will meet and we will decide that number. And those members will be made up of the community members who are movers and shakers, and others who are concerned citizens, to assist me in each of those unincorporated areas. I will, because the nature of the city of League City having 100,000 residents, and the economic makeup of those individuals as compared to the unincorporated areas, I will meet with those individuals as well. If they want a community advisory council, we will do the same. And I intend to do that across the board. Once that advisory council is made, I will meet with them, again, on their decision, monthly, bimonthly, whatever we decide. We will meet, and we will treat it like a mayor council form of government, if you will. We will have an executive session among that community advisory council, and then we will open it up at the end of the meeting for some period of time to discuss with the citizens their concerns in that county. That does two things. That makes my government, my job on the Commissioner's Court transparent, and that allows people to have a voice with me and for me as it relates to the Commissioner's Court.
One of the advantages of being almost a 50-year resident in Precinct One is the blessing of knowing a lot of the people who live there, a lot of the mayors, a lot of the city council members in the incorporated areas. And I have been on a listening tour through Precinct One, and listening to the people, and listening to their needs. Also, I look forward to participating with the established Mayor and Council Association of Galveston County. I know that Commissioner Clark has attended for years, and probably Commissioner Juicy as well. And that's a great organization. There are others. There are economic development groups, they have certainly one that we heard mentioned earlier. It was a pleasure to be at their recent banquet. And, you know, another important partner is the school district. And again, knowing some of the board members there, but mostly it's listening to the people in the precinct, and it's listening to the mayors and the councils, and it is being able to address their concerns. Transparency is very important to me, and I think that there are some big projects that are off in the wings, and I think it's very important that the people know about these in advance. Everybody needs to be listening to what's going on, and I look forward to helping deliver the message and helping inform people. Thank you very much.
One of the things that I'm going to continue that the current county commissioner's doing is doing the twice-a-year public meetings, both in Bay Cliff, San Leon, and over in the Bolivar Peninsula. Specifically in Bolivar, in the Bolivar Peninsula, I've been reaching out to some of those community folks over there, and the Chamber over there, they're really not a city, but they have a Chamber of Commerce, and a bunch of Realtors over there that really care about what's going on over there, and I'm reaching out to them to try to come up with some kind of mechanism, have those same people communicate with me. Again, we're going to have those twice-a-year meetings, and then one of the other things that the current commissioner is going to do, and I'm planning to do that as well, is to spend a whole entire week over on the peninsula, once a year, to be able to reach out to those folks, set up meetings, and have those community inputs. As far as the Bay Cliff, San Leon area, I've been going to the Bay Shore Alliance Club and the NOW Committee, and both of those organizations are excellent community organizations that work hard to try to bring services to their citizens over there. You know, the NOW Committee, they just started recently to look at crime, and they've brought various county and city elected officials over there to try to address their crime issues, and that's the kind of things that I'll do. We also need to continue to upgrade systems of the county as far as websites and ways for their people to reach out. Also, my personal cell number will be available, and if anybody's in Precinct One right now, it's 281-455-3816, and I will be giving that out to everybody in the district, and I'm reachable. This will be my full-time job, I won't have any other interests, I'll be able to do the job that I've been doing up in League City, is providing people services, and when they have problems, try to find the most effective way to cure those.
The thing that I think could be expanded very easily is tourism. Anytime there's a big major event in Galveston, you hear about it and you see it. People who come here to visit, whether it's for the Lone Star Bike Rally, whether it's for Mardi Gras, that was just bigger and better every year, when people come here to visit, there are very good odds that they're going to come back and they're going to buy property. Maybe they'll come back on an annual or four times a year basis to rent property here. So tourism is one of those. I think that there is a potential for expansion of Pelican Island. I look forward to getting more of that information, more details, so we can be very transparent on that. I think that listening to the plant managers in Texas City is very important, they are a major employer. Working with the University of Texas Medical Branch is probably the single largest employer here. Clear Creek ISD, another very large employer. So it's listening to them, listening to their needs, making sure that, you know, the school districts around the county, certainly Precinct One, that they have the best teachers, and with the families that come here. If businesses do well, if the major employers do well, certainly watching NASA come back with the new Orion Project, certainly seeing all these employers is going to be nothing but positive for people here, and then that's going to help us from an economic development tax standpoint on our tax rates. Thank you.
I know we probably have a bunch of people that are here in League City. One of the issues that we have in League City is that about 80% of the tax revenues that come in are from their, our homeowners. So one of the things we have to do to try to lower our tax burden on our individuals, we have to bring in other businesses, clean businesses, to bring in, bring jobs and bring money to the county. One of the first things that I did after being mayor, I sent my first letter to Cabela's to try to get them to be an economic catalyst here in the League City area. And you know, in about two weeks, we're going to have the grand opening of the first Cabela's in the Houston area, and that's a big thing for League City, it's going to be about 160 jobs. Memorial Hermann is also bringing another facility there. We already have UTMB both on the island and up in League City as far as doing that. You know, I started on economic development on the League City Economic Development Council back in, I think, the early 90s, I spent about seven years on that board. Then I'm up in here in the League City area, League City Chamber used to have economic development morning meetings, I've been going to those. So, you know, I have a lot of contacts with both the city, county levels, you know, I was the chairman of the Galveston County Mayors and Councilmen's Association, and that's another venue that we can go on a monthly basis or bimonthly basis and communicate with other cities, and work together to bring common projects to League City, North County over in Bolivar. Bolivar is a whole fertile area that's just looking for development. So the other thing is, I've been on the, I've been the chairman of the Bay Area Visitors Bureau for about three years. So I do this on a monthly basis, I don't just talk about it, I do it, and you know, we work with that organization to bring conventions and people that are going to come spend money in our cities, whether it's here or anywhere in the county. Again, we have to do things to bring businesses in here that are clean, that employ people here, and they want to come here, and subsidize our current high taxes in any part of the county, so that's it.
I attended the Texas Realtors Association luncheon last month, and the Galveston Chamber was speaking to them regarding the beach restoration projects currently going on and currently planned. The Galveston Chamber has done a marvelous job of promoting our beaches. The tourism industry is key to this county, because every one of those individuals that ends up on those beaches comes through League City, and Dickinson, and Texas City, and Lamar, and to here. So, one, I will continue to assist the efforts with the GLO to make sure that the beach restoration projects go forward. I think they are vital to our economic development in this county. The peninsula has the same issue, they need beach restoration. I will work with those individuals to get us beach restoration on the peninsula. Second, we have to get a hold of the current real estate appraisal system in the state, but in our county as well. We don't want, like occurred in Santa Fe, Texas in October, a 28% to 35% increase on taxes. I will work with Cheryl Johnson, the current tax assessor, who I proudly tell you has endorsed me for this office. I will work with her in the state legislature to reform that real estate appraisal system. If we don't reform that system, let me back up. Three juries have told us, as citizens of this county, that the current appraisal system is wrong as it relates to industry. Three plants in Texas City have taken their case to a jury trial, and the juries have said you were overappraised. If we continue that current system of overappraisal, then guess what? Industry's not going to come here. We can't have that. We need industry. That's what commissioners are supposed to do, economic development, bring industry to our county, not just a Cabela's, but all over this county. So I will work to protect that right.
What are your plans for collaboration between Commissioner's Court and the various active business and civic organizations within the county to promote growth of the Republican Party?
I guess it starts with electing good conservative candidates to office here in Galveston County. We've done a good job of that since Commissioner Clark was elected back in 97. You know, but we have to lead by example, we have to have a common goal. You know, I think a long time ago when the Democrats were here, you know, they decided beforehand, you know, who was going to run, and then they would, everybody would get behind that one county, that one candidate. What's happening now, that we are the Republicans, everybody, you know, you get four and five candidates, and then you drag out this long process, instead of trying to come together in some kind of vetting system or whatever to get these people, single candidates, so we're not all beating each other up and showing a united front. We need to show a united front, not a separated front, where we have different factions providing candidates for different races. We need to try to get together, come up with common people, so we don't have to stretch out elections and have runoff elections and all that type of thing. We have to show by example, we have to be conservative, but yet we have to continue to get progress. You know, I hate to talk about League City and everything, you know, it is a big place, but we were able to conserve our tax rate, and we were still able to put all that money in the ground to provide services. So it's not impossible to lower taxes and then provide the good type of services we need, whether it's the Galveston Republican Women, Clear Creek Republican Women, the Bay Area Republican Women, we need to work with those folks. These are all great organizations that do great work for this county. We need to partner with them and have joint events, like the Lincoln Day Dinner, that brings everybody together for one night or two nights a year, that shows common goals and common responsibilities and things that we as Republicans can be proud of. So that's what I do, thank you.
When I filed for this office, I went in and saw Mrs. Meeks, and I swore my allegiance to the Republican Party and to the Republican platform. I know you all realize our government's broken on a national level, when you see the card-carrying socialist can garner almost 61% of the vote last night in New Hampshire. We have got to join together. What I see with the problem has been, and I hear it with Marie Robb and Carl Gustafson, is unifying the party. I have been a good listener, a team player. I have been a boss for 30 years, but you never hear me say "I" in team. My workers, my employees are my coworkers, they have always been my coworkers. I don't say, "Will you go do this because I want this?" What I say is, "How can we accomplish what I need to get done?" It's always been about teamwork and team ethic with me. And as it relates to this party, what I see with the party is I will hopefully work with this party. I have met with many, if not all, of the individuals of the party, to tell them my teamwork ethic and my promise to work with each of those individuals to create a better, united party, so that we can conduct business appropriately, effectively, and efficiently going forward.
Thank you. I think it's important to remember, well, first and foremost, isn't it wonderful that we live in the United States of America? For anybody who wants to run for office, can run for office. I agree, it's sad to see the turn that our nation is taking. I think Galveston County can be held up as the prime example on what can be done when we have good people who work together. We have literally transformed this county, and there is not one statewide elected official that doesn't recognize and acknowledge Galveston County. So we know the hard work that Chris Anne Vogel pulled in, we all admire her and looked up to her for that. We know the hard work that our former county chairs have done. Judge Neves, US One, Kevin Porgren is here, another former county chair. But it is important that we remember that some of these civic clubs are prohibited from taking a political standpoint, and that's what makes groups like Galveston Republican Women, Clear Creek Republican Women, the Galveston Island Pachyderms, Friendswood Republican Women, the- Women, the Galveston Island Pachyderms, Friendswood Republican Women, the Republican Network, both Lake City and Mid-County. That's what makes them really important partners to get this word out. I think that there is one area that we need improvement. And when Carl asked to meet with me when he was thinking about running for county chair was, "Is there anything that you didn't accomplish that you would have liked to have seen?" I think the one thing that I would like to see is see more ownership in the Republican headquarters. I think that there is every group that I've just previously mentioned, every Republican group can take time, take maybe a day a month, and volunteer there. That is one area that we can all help. Because let's face it, we're all volunteers. And I think that something that all of Commissioners' Court can do is make an effort to reach out to and speak to the different Republican organizations so that they know what we're doing. Again, transparency. You know, there's a reason why we have two ears and one mouth. That's so we can listen. And I know that everybody in every one of these Republican organizations is hungry to listen to what's going on in the county and what can they do to help. Thanks.
Do you believe that voluntary professional and community service is a necessary commitment for persons holding public office? What forms of voluntary professional and community service have you been involved in the past and currently?
I absolutely believe in volunteering in your community as it relates to your family, your work, and your faith. I was a 20-year member of Texas City Little League. I was a five-year member of the Texas City Pony League. I served on both of those boards. I was a 10-year member of the Texas City High School baseball booster, the football booster. Those sound small, but I can tell you, I ran golf tournaments every year that we had to get 18 foursomes in order to be profitable so that we could buy underprivileged children the things they needed that the school did not provide. I coached Little League. I coached soccer with my daughter. I coached Pony League. I served on the Galveston County Bar Association Pro Bono Committee. I was the president, I'm the past president of the Galveston County Bar Association. I've served on bank boards. I was involved in, I was a member of the District 5C Grievance Committee for the State Bar of Texas. Those are just a few of the volunteerisms that I have done in this community and will continue to do. I absolutely believe it's important, and it makes for good relationships and will make for good relationships between a county commissioner such as I and the community.
For the time I was a little girl, I was involved in community civic service. The Glen Cove Junior Civic Club. Looking back, I must have really been a nerd. But you know what our project was? The Glen Cove Park. We kept that park clean. And this was, would have been in '67, '68. So some of the drug things were just coming up, and we wanted to make sure that that park was clean for every kid that wanted to go there and hang out there. Because that was when we could still go and run around the neighborhood and be safe. We didn't have to worry about being kidnapped. And, you know, as a Girl Scout, I sold Girl Scout cookies. And I think it is, we probably can't make it a requirement that people volunteer, but boy, it sure rounds you out as an individual. I have experienced that firsthand. As an adult, when my daughter was, well, before my daughter was born, I was the first woman director of the Voting Trades Association of Metropolitan Houston. They put on the big annual boat shows two, three times a year. And again, you know, volunteering for the good of that whole industry. And what the side benefit of that was, has to be to serve on national dealer council organizations so that I can try and bring the East Coast and the West Coast of the voting businesses together. On a local basis, golly, the Texas PTA, I've been involved in PTA every year that my daughter was in school, from elementary school up through high school. And I'm very proud that they saw fit to award me with a Texas Life Membership in the Texas PTA. Clear Creek Cleanup, I'm going to give them a plug, this Saturday from 8 until 2 at the Boat Ramp on 270 at Clear Creek. It's their 17th Annual Creek Cleanup. I've missed four for the past year between volunteering as the county chairman. That's probably the biggest volunteer role for anybody. Get ready, Carl. And in addition to that, Lake City Garden Club, oh, boy, I'd be hard pressed to name all of them, but I have been very engaged in the community and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Well, you know the old saying, "If you want something done, ask the people that have the busiest schedules." So, you know, I became involved in Dickinson back in 1989. I had a newspaper over there, and I was on the chamber board for many years before I ever became an elected official. But I'm just going to give you a little synopsis, a real quick list of all the things that I've done and continue to do. You know, I was a member of the Dickinson Economic Development Board, Dickinson Historical Society, Lake City Little League, I was a co-chair, Lake City Youth Soccer Programs. I've been a Rotary Club member in Dickinson for almost 28 years, and I got 27 years of perfect attendance. You know, I was both the Chamber Ambassador of the Year for both the Lake City and North Galveston County Chamber of Commerce, and I ran both of their ambassadors' programs. You know, one of the things, about seven years ago, when we first started talking about senior citizens' resources in Lake City, we set up our Lake City Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And we set that up, I think, in '08, and I've been a board member of that ever since. One of the things I noticed, a lot of people, my elected official people, kind of fuss at me or give me a hard time. I teach four senior aerobic classes up at Hometown Heroes Park every single week. You know, I give that. You know, some of my professional things that I do right now, I'm the chairman of the Galveston County Transit Authority, and I've done that for three years. I'm the incoming chair of the Bay Area Houston Boy Scouts of America. I'm the chair of the Bay Area Houston Tourism and Visitors Bureau, and I just was asked to join the Galveston County Truancy Board. I'm the past chairman of the Galveston County Mayors and Councilmen's Association, and I'm associate member of the Clear Creek Republican Women, and I have done that for the last 10 years. And like I told you earlier, the thing that I really like to do is go spend that 30 minutes a week reading to kids at Lake City Elementary. You know, Lake City Elementary is one of our first elementary schools in Lake City, but it's kind of gotten to where it's kind of a low social-economic clientele there, and over 50% of those kids at that school are on split families, don't have families. So I read to a couple of those kids. Last year, one of my kids, you know, he was just distraught because his mother was in jail. And that's the type of thing, those kids don't know boundaries, whether they're in Lake City Elementary or whether they're at Bowers Flag or one of the more affluent elementary schools. They're just kids. And to me, that's the biggest thing I do every week, is go down there and read to those kids because, you know, just as the program says, our readers do ultimately make leaders of our city. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. What is conservatism to you?
Well, I believe I mentioned earlier this evening, those basic principles, the smaller government, lower taxes, reduce spending. And then beyond that, we're looking at upholding the United States Constitution. It's been amazing as county chair to see people who come in and on this questionnaire actually mark that they believe that the Constitution is a living, breathing document, and it should change with the times. I could not disagree with that more. That's not, I mean, that's wrong. I'm a proud holder of my CHL. That is certainly being a true conservative. Personal responsibility, that's way at the top of my list. My parents raised me not to complain about something, rather take action. Personal responsibility. I have followed through on that my entire life, whether it was president of Clear Creek Republican Women, whether it was PTA president, learning Robert's Rules of Order, county chairman as well. I think being a conservative is living by example. I think it's certainly offering a hand up to others. I'm a strong Christian and proud to serve at my church, Clear Creek Community Church. And every Sunday, we do something to help others, whether it's bring people there, whether it's make them feel welcome at the coffee, and even holding voter registration lines. So being a conservative is who I am. Personal responsibility is how I live my life, and I look forward to bringing those values and augmenting the values that are already on Commissioners' Court. Thank you.
Well, I think what a conservative to me is to make sure that the taxes and services that your cities and governments are giving you are done as efficiently and the most productive that they can be. In Lake City, as I've said before, you know, we've done a good job of going from 63 cents down to 57. And, you know, this past year was very trying from a Lake City standpoint because just as other cities in Galveston County saw huge increases in appraised values. And while we can go up to the legislature and say, try to do things to improve our appraisal system, every city and every taxing entity can offset those increases by lowering their tax rate. You know, if they go down to the effective rate, they basically are collecting the same amount of money as they did last year. And, you know, we've done pretty good on keeping our taxes close to that effective rate and still allowing us to get the things done that we need to get done. I mean, we're just not throwing money. We couldn't be providing services for 100,000 people in Lake City if we were just throwing our money away. You know, one of the things that I did in Lake City, you know, we had this issue about prayer before our council meetings. I don't know if y'all followed that in the news, but, you know, I stood up and so did our other council members in saying, "You know what? We're going to continue to revive our prayers before our council meeting." You know, we have a rotation basis of bringing in different clergy people to give our prayer before that. And, you know, the Supreme Court just ruled recently that allowed us to do that. But we were getting a lot of flak from outside groups that don't want religion in government. But, you know, our founding fathers founded this country on belief in their God. You also, you know, in Lake City, we also had issues with immigration. You know, we fought in Lake City all the way to the Supreme Court, you know, to try to do things about preventing illegal immigrants, workers from coming to Lake City. You know, we stood up and tried to enforce a state law about solicitation in the streets. You know, we stood up for a state law that was later found unconstitutional, but we're doing what we're doing to make sure that we are obeying the state laws of Texas, but then we get punished because that's what we were doing. And then, you know, we went to court, and we had to settle and pay lawyers' fees, you know, just trying to stand up for our basic values about immigration reform. So, you know, I've led by example in Lake City, and I think I'm very proud of that. The Commissioners' Court has done a good job over the last few years of getting their tax rate down to the effective rate. But there's still a lot to go. We still have to provide the services to our Sheriff's Department in Bay Cliff and San Leon, and we got to work with our state and national leaders over in Bolivar to get things done so they can get in and out of the peninsula. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
A conservative to me personally means putting God first, my family second, and country third. It means having a job. It means working hard to provide for your family. It means following my moral convictions, such as traditional marriage, right to life, and following the Constitution in its purest form. Being a conservative in the job of county commissioner means being a frugal spender of tax dollars. It means smaller government. It means spending the money appropriately, transparently, in each city or unincorporated area of the county. It means assuring that your tax dollars are not being spent frivolously, that cuts to the budget are true cuts, not cuts that are unrealistic and cost adjustment, so that county business can be run effectively.